Live Spring, C D B G claim consideration. Nick, how are you, buddy?
Good.
Good.
Good. I have a claim for the acquisition of the building. Livestreams aren't paid this amount. There's also the reimbursement, you know, the sponsors, which is. I've got a request to have for the wire transfer. It's already been done. They started construction two weeks ago, project. They'll start to see construction invoices as well come through here.
Okay. All right. Do not hear our motion.
Motion.
Motion to allow five hundred thousand for the acquisition fee to be transferred. Second that, my case and that. I will say for the record here, I didn't say that starting out at, well, the record show that two of the commissioners here, myself and John and our other, Mr. Houston, he is in Indy, I don't know if he's going to be, he may be in here yet, and Mr. Jones had some come up to work, had a truck that was involved in an accident. He's going to have to be tied up with that for a while, it's tonight, maybe all, so anyway, let's let the record show that.
And I also have this second request. This is our invoice for River Hills for professional services for that grant. It's not included in the client's here, so I'm going to give it to you here.
Watch this again.
This is for our professional services, this is for the C D B G grant.
Yes.
Twenty-two thousand five hundred, twenty-two thousand five hundred. Livestream will provide that funding, so I request that you approve this pending receipt of those funds from Livestream. They're providing all the local match for that project.
The Livestream actually?
Yeah, it's just everything's coming through the account.
And then what we will do if you do approve this is that whenever we get the funds, then the urgent claims, we'll just roll that out on Friday.
So, you don't like the motion?
I don't like the motion.
The pending Livestream's.
Yes.
Thank this. I'll second that. Get these down here. There you go. Is that it? That's pretty tall.
I'm sneaking in that to the open.
All right. Next is CEASE, twenty-nineteen comprehensive plan. Laurie, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, I'm back again. So, in October, I turned in our CEASE twenty-nineteen comprehensive community plan update to the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, and they sent Tammy a letter on October fifteenth. You should have the approval letter there saying that they approved it, and now all that needs to happen is that you all approve it. And then Teresa's been able to release the funds to CEASE in January, and then we give those out with grants in February to all of our community partners that apply for those grants that are due in early December.
And all of them do that throughout the order?
Um, yes, all of the checks are written by the auditor now, yes, according to statute. So, yeah, but that money's already set aside, it's money set aside through the fees that are, the fines that are collected through the courts, and so it's earmarked to be spent as, you know, in those form of grants for those entities that are part of those. The great committee will meet in December and to decide which entities will receive those grant funds, so.
Is this, now, is the membership list, is that the N I Ds that will receive some of this money?
Um, well, if they apply.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Those are generally the people who attend on a regular basis, our meetings. And those who attend a minimum of six CEASE meetings a year are eligible to receive funding. So, you know, like Sheriff's Department, in terms of law enforcement, Patsburg P D, Austin does not apply. You know, the treatment centers like Treatment Interventionary Centerstone, Livestream, and then prevention and education would be the entities like, you know, Scott District Two for their fourth and fifth grade club that they have and.
On the show.
Pardon me, on the show. Oh, yeah, definitely. So, under the, those are not printed in color, but, so this is actually a year two update, so everything is, that is for, all of the data that reflects two, twenty-eighteen would be under the tab of year two update. So, we write a new plan every three years, and then the years in between, we do an update each year, reflecting the new data. So, all of the most updated data in there would be for all of twenty-eighteen.
Pretty good stuff, I mean, a lot of improvements.
In terms.
I think there's some things you probably.
Yeah, in terms of initiatives, yeah, we have some amazing collaboration going on in the community and a lot of great programs. I could sit here and spend two hours telling you about them, but I'm not going to do that. You can go home and read this in your leisure.
I will.
It's a pretty comprehensive document. I will say, and I'm ragging on our coalition a bit, but we do get complimented at the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute for having one of the best comprehensive community plans in all the state.
I believe that.
So, pretty, pretty, and we have a great relationship with them. We're actually getting ready to apply for a grant with C J I, with the partnership being the fiscal agent, because they have a five oh one C three, on behalf of CEASE, the coalition.
Drive gear last night, couple of those we've all been got.
The R C O, yeah, yeah. I'm also on that board as well.
All right, do not have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, and we'll move it forward.
Okay, all right, I'll see you again when it's time to approve the grants.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Thanks you, for all you do.
All right. Next up is prosecutor grant application request and twenty twenty additional positions.
Hi, I'll start with the grant application request. That is the drug grant that we've had for many years. That's supposed to be a four-year grant, we've now had that grant for way more than four years. They have indicated to us that, you know, this will be the last year, we're on the part of the match where we pay seventy-five percent this year, they pay twenty, they only pay twenty-five percent. And that's, it's all we've gone through, that's a budgeting for that in the budget that's been approved by the council.
And for prosecutor or for?
That is, it pays for, it was a ninety, it was a ninety thousand dollar grant, actually, I can't remember the exact number, we've had that for many years, supposed to be a four-year grant.
Yeah.
We had it for way more than four years. It got reset, actually, when we had the H I V epidemic. We probably got over that case out of that, and they kind of indicated to us after, after this year, you know, don't apply for a while, because you know, beginning, I have it for so long, so. I'm just asking for the final year approval to submit for the final year of that grant.
Motion to allow?
I assume, yeah, I'll make a motion. I'm assuming that'll vote, uh, and you'll vote the council.
Council's already, that was, it was already, as far as the budgeting stuff, it was already budgeted for us to pay the seventy-five percent and twenty-five percent.
Make a motion. I'll second that, and like you can announce what that's forward tonight, and offer up some advice. I'd go ahead and apply anyway, because sometimes they really don't pay it when it's in.
Sure. Of course, I could say.
Yeah, no, we'll think, say, no, yeah. So, I'd probably go ahead and, whatever, for another four years if you can.
Right.
You know, and again, worst case scenario, it's like, I thought we told you that once, but.
It covered, yeah, so we had, at the end of the grant, let's say we're getting drug work, we're at one time partially paid off that. So, this year, basically, we will get twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars in, which is twenty-five percent of ninety thousand. And then the next thing on there is, I think, a staff position in twenty-twenty. And I believe it's on this.
Same one?
Yeah, I believe so.
There's actually no paperwork for that, it's just more information.
Right, and so we, again, this was, I talked to Teresa and then they said, take it to the, through budget, first with the council. It's part of the budget that's been approved by the council. Basically, I asked for a full-time staff position in our office, just to deal with the increasing workload, the e-filing that we've done now, puts a lot, a great deal of more work on our office as far as preparing charges, the getting that stuff, skinning that file, and that stuff. And so that was already approved in twenty-twenty budget, and I just, they told me to go ahead and go that way first, and then they recommended I come down and, you know, ask for your best lesson on that, so it was budgeted for twenty-twenty, approved by the council.
All right, motion, second. And all just been approved by them, we're good, so, there you go.
Thank you.
That's a pretty easy one.
Yep, now we're third grade basketball players.
Hey, that's a little tougher, that's a little tougher there.
I thought you were a little older than that.
My skill, my skill, my skill. He's going to be a starter. All right. Next up is P T O policy variance request, and sheriff's.
Come on in. Sheriff. Are you in line?
Basically, I'm not available here for you to submit to, I'm going to read it to you, I think you've got a copy of it.
Okay.
Basically, what it says is, is we're just asking, I'm asking that we go ahead and pay Josh Watson out for his twenty-year severance, and this is a request of Tammy, makes it her office, she can explain to you better, but it just makes sense to do it, so.
He is being treated by the mayor board as, as a retiring, basically, and so they're fully retiring him. I discussed this with Kent Irwin's office, and this is such a rare type occasion to have someone that is, that is retired, that in order to, it's not a, his seniority doesn't mesh with what the request is here, but they said if the commissioners approved it as a variance to policy for this one particular case, that I would have the authorization in this auditor to pay him a severance benefit according to how the request was approved. So, and they said this is so rare, this would be something that would not be, maybe never ever happen again, but that if the sheriff made the request and you all approved it, then I could, I could distribute the funds per the approval.
Okay, and let me ask you, all the funds, all right, but what I'm reading here, in my understanding, it would basically, what, ninety-two hours is up on whatever that? Okay.
I mean, his, his obviously, he was planning return, on returning, but his situation detailed otherwise, so.
And he, I suppose you can't work long for him anywhere around?
Well, I don't know about that, because the sheriff's pensions are different, usually I'm saying with each county, but he was pretty, he can't work it here, obviously, and he can't work for us in law enforcement.
Well, I'm thinking more like if he, I'd be careful, if he does, that would seem to me like almost, we could come back and say, we're changing things here.
Yeah, that's something I have to discuss with Bob, you know what I'm saying, because I really don't know.
I think we should.
Sure.
And I also, might, it'll be, maybe difficult, but I don't look at it as variance, I look at it as change of policy. And I know it's variance, but once we've done that, I don't know why anybody else would have something, they wouldn't come in and say, why not me?
I think the difference for Wagner Irwin, too, was the situation, it's a medical retirement, it's not a retirement of normal circumstances. This is beyond the, what a handbook would be written for, because they don't cover every scenario, and that's why he would go to an open meeting and request from one elected official to the other, a policymaking board, can we have a variance on this, just like you would a planned commission variance. I mean, the zoning doesn't cover everything, it's the same thing with a handbook.
For ninety-two hours?
Yes, that's basically, and that, that's it, there's no other long jet, there's no other benefit there at all.
And each case would be individual, but if it would be a variance, it would come back individual case again. I understand what you're saying there, but I think, in my, my personal opinion, is the fact that, again, if it is a medical reason that he's been retired, he's really not wanted to retire, he wanted to come back to work, I think, under these circumstances, I would be opposed to it.
And our agent consultant firm did use the word rare.
Yes.
With this situation, it is very rare to rare.
But they recommend it.
They recommend that it would be totally appropriate to do with his request and your all's approval from, because I can't administer anything against the policy, so to speak.
The money's already there.
And the, yes, the money's been budgeted in, I mean, the money has, vacation is there, yeah, and that policy, he's not outside of the policy as far as what he's been allowed to accrue or anything like that, it's just whether we pay up on separation of employment, these benefits.
Yeah, I'm okay, I, I want to make sure that.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, exactly.
Yes.
I understand that. I want to make sure, I don't want, I want to make sure if they're going to do this work somewhere else, say, oh, you don't agree?
Yeah, I totally, I totally understand that.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, will you take a vote, I'm going to go out.
Money there, our people recommend it, so.
Official, if you give to Tammy, she can.
Yes, I'll, I make my, you want, you want me to give it to Tammy? Go ahead, sit there.
Yes, that's very official.
Yeah, okay.
Next thing I wanted to ask you about is, is actually Josh Watson, again, came, he sent me an email here, he said that since he's retired from sheriff's office, he's requested to keep his off-duty sign-on, it's a Glock Model forty-three, serial number V H R S ninety-six, thanks for the help. He's requesting since he was medically retired, usually when somebody gets twenty years and they retire, they're giving their sign-on, he was medically retired, which essentially twenty years, he's asking for his sign-on, basically.
And I think we've done it for, who spent less than.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I know, I'm pretty sure of that.
I think we just did, if I'm not mistaken, for a year, I don't think he had twenty years.
He had, no, he needed.
Totally, maybe he did everything that he had done.
Well, and you're right, retirement's a different at the sheriff's office than maybe somewhere else, so twenty years of the word we use, but it's not necessarily retirement word, word over there.
Yeah, right.
So, I don't pay it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm glad.
A couple of other things here, is what I would like to do is just kind of put this out to you, and I'll give it to Bob, I'll send you the information if you guys approve it. I would like to, because you guys will have to do it, I'd like to file a lawsuit against John Sullivan, he is the guy that tore up a padded cell, cost us three thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, call it, exactly, I'd like to file a suit against him, you know what I'm saying? Of course, it'd be, the commissioner would have to do that, but it's my suggestion to do that, and I'll give everything that we need to make sure that it's done, if you all approve that and that.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
How much damage did it?
Thirty-eight seventy-eight total.
Thirty-eight thousand?
No, three thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And, you know, will we get it or not, do we let people?
Understand.
Yeah. You can't, right, absolutely, they can't come and destroy the type of fair property without any kind of repercussions, in my opinion, and I think you all understand.
And you might, prosecutor might help you out on that, too, when you come to the yard.
Good deal, good deal. A couple of exciting things happening real quick. We've got the new booking areas completed, we've got the open space for the body scanner, it's coming in, the date they said they were going to shoot for was next Wednesday, but we don't know how that works, we've been waiting on Stanley for two months.
Yeah.
But we'll see what happens, we're supposed to be in, so that'll be done. And then the next thing we'll do is, is we'll go ahead and start that construction on that new sale, that we was talking about, the six-page sale, so then what we do, and what I'd like to do is, I'm going to have like an open house again, have everybody come through and check now. Last thing I've got for you guys is, this is the contract we have with Livestreams. The council asks to separate it up into years, will be easier, that's the, the Livestreams contract, so, and all that is just for next year, for twenty-twenty.
They've already been through it for you, just like we talked about before.
Yeah, right, and what happened is, is the council and Tammy can explain this a little better, I'm sure, it was, it was too confusing to say that they was going to be a two-year contract or one and a half-year contract, what it was, so what we did is, we went ahead and did a contract till the end of this year, because we started middle of the year and then started all the rest of them, where they could fund the whole year in the next year or something, and it just needs your signature approval there.
Really, I think it needs the same, we're going to do a time for motion, too, it's already been approved to bring them in for twenty-twenty. So, it's just, this one here is for the twenty-twenty year, the other one's already been.
It's already been, yeah, actually, it's already been approved, you guys already approved it, it just, they wanted to do it to make it easier for the council.
Well, that's what you need it.
Uh, she's doing it now, yeah, hopefully she'll stay in, she does excellent job. And I got you guys a copy of it, too, if you can put the, if you have to attain that.
Very good.
That's extra copy. Do you, you want to keep that one, too, or do you want me to take that back, it's one actual, you'll have to get back, or I can get back with Livestreams and have them sign that, so.
Yes, um, you want to go and just take this one back, and then you guys can just scan it, and you have to give it a sign and pass that, that one for me.
Perfect. Yeah, I'll take that.
Don't need to test anything, I don't know, sometimes they have my signature, it's necessary, no time to spot, so.
No, it does have a.
Does it have a test?
Yeah, mine's not here. Let me let you look at it, because I'm, I'm pretty, no, I'm not scared, so. That's all I have, we're going to be, what our security room will belong to, you guys got any questions with me, or?
Is the, yeah, one sale there in the new part that was, had to, what, we went through two or three times, how's that, did they get that big?
That's, no, and what's happening is, is actually Bob was going to contact, was going to send the letter to the company stating that they needed to come back and rectify the problem, because they'd paid them back, so that's not new fix, so, I need to, just follow Bob, see what he's, what he's got with that.
Yeah, we'll, grab a little cage, a little bit on that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, because we've already got, of course, the heating and air is done, everything like that's done, and I'm really, I'm really, really excited, really pleased with the way things are turning out, and how you guys are turning, I think you will be, because it's, we're, I'm not going to mention any dollars right now, because I'm going to let you be pleasantly surprised, you know what I'm saying, hopefully, you know, something comes out, so.
Well, and the generator on the outside, they got it all up and running, right?
Yes.
And we're firing that thing, like it's supposed to do.
It does automatically test itself, you know, but that was another thing, too, we need to follow up on, because I think in a meeting we discussed that you guys was going to go ahead and have somebody pull of the generators?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if that was ever.
That was the one, I'm trying to fix it, I believe, I met the same people, I can't remember who that was, that come in and done that.
Yeah, it was a company out of my cellar floor.
Yeah, I think so, because it was.
That's something we, if we do any follow-up on, we can.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a note there, we talked to, let's talk to Tony on, all of the generators, because they was going to do the ones here over there, two, and I think nine on one, because it has the generators, he was going to do that thing.
Yes, there's true.
Yeah, so, and we want to make sure that things.
They're planning to get one up here, like by December or something, so.
Correct, December is the next maintenance schedule on them, and they were done in June and maintenance, or June and December is when they come by maintenance, the number of year.
Okay, all right, yeah, we're just going to get the same, same individual group.
And let me ask you guys something, too, is this, we're tearing out all the old stuff there at the jail, we've got that big boiler, and we've got that little generator that's there, what do you want me to do with that? Can we put that into the county auction, and they try to go ahead and sell that on eBay or something, and manage fund?
I don't know what you're talking about, yeah, I did.
I don't, I don't think it's like the difference, I think, if I'm not mistaken on that, we'll check with Bob on that, but I think of, it's my understanding that it would have to go through some type of auction, whether it be live or whether it be, you know, whether it be, just take bids off it, my understanding is, because playing food with taxpayers' dollars, then you have to basically include that for ours, one way or the other.
Certainly, if you were taking down.
And that's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, we do, okay. Yeah, we can do what we need to do, because we're getting all that stuff, you know what I'm saying, cleared up and moved out, so. Another thing, real briefly, that I want to talk to you about is our leasing program, been very successful, I don't know if you saw the two L A Bs that we picked up, we picked up two light armored vehicles, intended water rescue vehicles, and so we can drive out for no need for boats anymore, we can drive out right to where the car is, and tow the rope over, pick them up, whatever, bring them up, and I, we're about getting boats and all that.
Is that right?
What we have, we've got one parked over at the jail now, we've got two of them, one of them we got for parts and they're on for active use, so what we're going to do is, we're going to get with the fire departments and Greg with the M A, we're going to offer training for the fire departments folks to be able to use those, too, that way we can keep the park at a central location, if somebody needs to come and get for water rescue, all they got to do is come and jump in, and they drive just like a truck.
Yeah.
It's nothing fancy about it, and it's, it's a, you'll see when you go there.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that, I'll see if I can get a, and make it there, too.
We have a lot of little things that, like, they're.
Yeah, we'll, 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 Sheriff's, yeah, so, and then we've got handwinds over there, two, a hundred B M ones that we picked up in case of implement weather, and that's something we was going to mention to Tyler, see if that's something that they could, if they needed to use, whatever, it'd be at their disposal in case that, because I know living in a rural area, you know how it is, if you get someplace, if you get to the driveway, you can't get up the driveway, so it's something that he could call that out, and they could transfer everybody from, or a person from the house to that, down to the railway or wherever it is. We've got a lot of other equipment over there, too, that you get a chance, you know what I'm saying, I'll put a list together for you, make you know, so, we're going to accumulate more things this week.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be honest with you on that. Thank you.
All right, sure, thank you all, we'll see you. If you need anything, let me know.
All right, thanks. Highway department. Sign replacement. Conference room.
Have lunch. Have lunch. First off. This is the contract for the signed inventory. It's a replacement program that's been going on for a couple of years, but.
Do you sign, you need to sign, you're on the county here and there.
All, all counties, no stop signs and no road name signs, but like curb, the arrows, the bridge markers, all that, for the whole county will be done in this program, it was a two-phase.
So, it's basically replacing all we got?
Yes, and putting up a lot that should probably be there.
Okay.
That should legally be there, and it'll be graded, and it needs some review for reflection and so forth, but I think that requires all of you.
It does.
And it might, it's going to stop by tomorrow, but. It's an eighty-twenty, it, we give the money back, so.
Can you make a, here a motion to the first?
I do.
Oh, second. So, we get, mostly have done, and we send that, so.
They bill us each one, we send in.
Okay, I see. And what's the second on that? Is that it?
One second. No, that was just, well, I just showed you how much it's going to cost the county, that little green mark, those, you want to see it. And the second one, we bid, we send out all the annual bids for January, but sometimes we get companies that will give us agreement to roll over their amounts for this year. SilverCon has offered to do that, which is metal, so it's smart for us to roll their last year bid over, and smart for them, so if you all would want to agree to do that, there's a place on the back, but we had done it in the years past, and there's a place on the back that you can sign that.
I thought it was going to drop to about thirty percent next year.
I think that's the agreement.
I think that was.
Oh, we left for the part.
Oh, you were.
Yeah, we walked out.
I'm all right with this, I was like, you know, that's.
We got three signatures on the back there.
You're good.
Yeah.
And the later management, he said, what happened?
I'm not making motions except to approve the same bid that last year, so, I'll second that.
Then this is, if you just want to, ideally, if you want to read that first sentence, maybe.
We're pleased to announce Scott County has been awarded seventy-six hundred dollars for the attached I P E P safety grant submission.
So, they're not grant?
Could be applying to our, could be, for the record.
Mm-hmm, it's our, we pay into I P E P for our employee.
Workers' comp.
Yeah, it's our workers' comp carrier, and last year was the first time that we got a grant from them, and we applied in this year, and we received the seventy-six hundred dollars. I do not need any signatures for it, however, I need this filled out by the auditor, and if I can pick it up Friday or something.
Now, in the, in, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did get this last year, too, and not to be used for like safety equipment, things like that.
It is for safety equipment, last year we got CHA, Roadtime, or, you know, workers, this.
Oh, really?
Oh, where?
Two, nothing, I think, not that long, yeah.
And then I have the community crossing grant agreement, that actually only the president is the, um, signature needed. And then I will need, actually, I don't even need Tammy to attest, doesn't look like, but you are the grantee on that. And what that states is, the amount that we receive this year, and it states that that is, uh, the state and us approving that these, in fact, are the roads that are going to be paved with the, uh, twenty-nineteen, the community crossing money paved in twenty-twenty.
I'm talking, it's pretty bad, too.
Yes. With that being said, I wanted to present real quick, you all, this information. And basically, John, I've talked to you, and I'll have to fill my again, but basically, in, in twenty-nineteen, the revenue from the state for our NVH funds is the million six-three, you see that, seventy-three, okay? It's mandated that Teresa split that in half, and one half goes into the NVH fund to run the highway department, and the other half goes into a restricted fund. With that being said, my regular budget at the highway department is one point two million a year. So with the council having me pay for our match of this grant you just signed, that's going to put you all down to just two miles a year for paving, that you pick, not the grant money, but that you pick.
I understand that.
So, um...
Actually, we, uh, uh, talked to, uh, actually I talked to Mike about this a little bit, and I'm on the agenda. Uh, we'll be on the agenda for, uh, next week, correct? And, uh, hopefully we're going to, and I would like for you to be there, too. And, uh, we will talk to them and see if they can work a little magic with this, and, uh, we'll certainly... We'll certainly lobby him for...
So for now, though?
For now.
Yeah, but for now, if you will get me two miles, yours is picked, but if you'll get yours in the next two weeks or whatever, I appreciate it.
Is this something that you have to turn in the court? I mean, you don't have, them's, uh, them's not...
It's not in the grant, we just like them.
Really, you just like them?
Yeah, we keep it up, so we know.
Well, I'm just going to hold on, give you, give you all of mine, which I, because I've got confidence, really, I've got confidence.
That's what we got, is...
Yeah.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Again, uh, you know, I, I tell you, just, again, uh, we have been very, so very blessed, so fortunate. And I know it come with a lot of hard work, and, uh, Jill has certainly done, uh, all the work to get the, uh, grant for the community crossing. I think to the tune, over the last, uh, what, four years here, three years, we've got three point six million, is that right? And I think it's like three million, six hundred or seven hundred thousand dollars. Every dime of that has been spent towards, uh, the improvement of roads here in Scott County. And, and I'm telling you, it's just, it's kind of an exciting time to look out and see the roads that's, uh, that hadn't had anything other than patched for the last twenty-five or thirty years, to be resurfaced. And I, you know, I, I still believe, and I, I see this, you know, everything that's in, in Clark County is moving north. And, you know, when you can do something to, to get the roads up and make it, you know, appealing to people that wants to come here and start up a business, or even move here, then, uh, that means a lot. So, uh, again, grateful to you, grateful for the council over the past year, for what they have put out.
The council has helped us every year.
Yeah, the council has, uh, you know, gave us, uh, gave us monies, and, and again, it's a, and, you know, uh, collaborating with them, I think it's just nothing but good for the community, for the whole county. So, uh, thank everybody that's involved, please pass that on to your council, too, Mike.
Last thing, real quick, there is a, with, with the amount of paving that the workers were doing, there is a conference, December eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, in Indy, that, uh, of course, INDOT participates with, but LTAC participates, but, um, I have the itinerary here, and it is, it's really something I would like to see about getting permission for the driver, the racer, and the possibly the two leaders and myself to attend. I'm not saying that we have to go the whole time, but I would really like your permission to let these guys go to at least the Wednesday and Thursday part. It's, it's...
Three of them all, who all gone?
No, there'd just be five. It'd be the driver of the paper, the two leaders, the roller, and myself. So it'd be five of us.
And would that, would you, where's the time to go up or come back, or are you staying overnight?
Well, I don't care, it's one day, you'd only be in the hotel one night, and that would only be three rooms, so...
Jill, they've worked their tails off down there, so if you think that would help them?
I, I think, I mean, there is really some beneficial exhibit people that are coming that show different ways to lay it. I mean, there's a lot of different things. We've never, they've never went to anything.
No, and I, and I agree, I, I think...
And obviously, I mean, there's, obviously, there's a small cost to it, you have to register, but I, I would, I would really like your permission to allow...
So what is, what, what is the cost, exactly?
Uh, it's probably going to run fifteen hundred for five. Oh, that'd be the conference and the food and the rooms and everything.
You got it?
Yes.
You feel comfortable with that, I'm for it, they can go take care of it, they earned it.
So John, you've made a motion, I'll second it, how's that?
Do you guys have anything for me?
You still, you still looking at the striker?
Yes, we, we are. That, we will probably go to Clark County, I told you we were going to go to Clark County, and look at their, we've paved this week every day.
Yeah.
Um, so it might be Monday, but before we get to go, we're going to go look at theirs first. We have ten thousand dollars in a strapping line, and we discussed whether we would spend that to striper road, or whether we would go buy a strapper. And so I think we're going to go to Clark County's and look at theirs, they've had theirs for eight years, and they do their own. And I also want to talk to them about the legality of it, I want to make sure that we don't...
What road you can't, can't...
Put anything down, that somebody's going to come up and say...
In other words, road could be too narrow.
Correct, correct.
I can see it all, I can see it all.
Only be a center, single line, is what I've been told so far.
So you can't do the white lines along the sides?
No, no.
Have them just long?
Can, yeah. So, and, and I don't know how the paint fresh, I mean, we don't, you know, call that market.
So you're looking into it?
Yes, we are.
I get a lot of those questions, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, we are.
And I do get a lot of compliments about what you have done there.
I know the biggest thing we've talked about, too, is, and again, maybe you talked a little bit about that today, but, uh, one of the biggest, I think, uh, improvements to what we've been doing is the links to the, to the paper, where you make one pull, and it's just so much, done so much for it.
Kevin, Kevin, there's three of us that went to another county. We just mocked another county, I mean, they're everyone, but, um, I want to, you know, as I told you, we're still waiting for those pumps to come back. You guys had approved last time that you would let me go get enough money from the council to purchase, but I'm kind of waiting a little bit to see. We did get a lead on another one, it's forty-nine thousand, doesn't really look as good as the one we're renting, that's about the same price, so I haven't jumped the gun on it yet, but, and obviously, we're done for this year, so, we might find something else that comes along. We also, uh, Jerry has given me permission to get on the LESO, which it's hard to do, because that's very time-consuming. Uh, there's codes, I mean, it could be in Germany or wherever, you don't know until you open each up line. So hopefully, maybe if we get some snow to haze where we're down there or something at night, you know, we can get on there and look around, too. But, um, we might even find one there, you know, we're down a tractor, and we still need to decide what we're going to do about that, but, we'll see.
What, uh, side, side mowers? How are we setting them, yeah?
That's, we're down one.
Uh, because it's tractor or the mower?
Because of the mower, I think, remember the one that broke in half? And then they...
About a tiger?
I think so. It was the orange one, wasn't it?
I think it was a tiger mower.
And then they took that mower off, and the Hunley kid told them to put it on something else, and they did, but that's down. And so we're kind of, and we really need to have that, I think, though.
Look, I can't remember, can you remember the price on them, do you?
I don't.
Are you going to say that, I'm not possible, are you using? No, we're not going to talk, see, you might want to look at, I'll, I'll get the information, if, if they still have it.
Okay, alright.
But it's, I think it is the same amount, too.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. Alright, United Healthcare Ins, no, tax sale certificate, the signing request of the city of Austin. This is a resolution here, uh, whereas Scott County, Austin, Scott County Treasury, conducting, please, the twenty-nineteen tax sale presented to engine code on October third, uh, twenty-nineteen, and whereas the falling road state is in Scott County was offered for sale in the twenty-nineteen tax sale, and the amount was not received equal to or in excess of a minimum sale price. Uh, there's part, two parcels here, is what I'm seeing. They are in the, uh, city of Austin, uh, it is, uh, you've got a copy of that there. Rice, uh, two lot, sixty-eight, and then that one is, uh, on the, what's that, five fifty North Street in Austin, that one's at one forty-seven, South Fifth Street, uh, I think we can actually give these to the city of Austin.
There's a tax sale certificates that commissioners hold, both right now, for any parcels that did not sell, tax sales. So, um, we have two certificates that you mentioned here, that per your agreement, um, and adoption of this resolution, you can assign that redemption period over to the city of Austin. Um, if they're successful, that shortens the redemption period required by law. If a regular lien buyer buys them, it's a three hundred and sixty-five day cycle. If a city, if it gets transferred, it's a hundred and twenty day cycle. So they could take possession of this within about a third of the time. Um, and then also, the taxes will be written off to these as they go to a non-tax, you know, or not, you know, uh, not taxable unit, so...
Make sure I'm saying this right, because they might see this, probably wonder how this happens. My understanding is your properties have been up for sale several times.
Some have been...
And sometimes the taxes are, there's nobody, if you want to sit there, nobody's going to get anything, we're not going to get anything. And the town of Austin can use those properties, so we're allowed to sign off, and they can use it for whatever purpose they need.
If they're successful, because they have to go through the steps of notification, just like a lien buyer.
Yeah.
And lots of times, it could be, it's just simple, too, is that maybe a lot of money spent on to clean it up.
Austin may very well hold a big lien office themselves.
Well, that's also probably cleaning my feet, I'm sorry, cleaning up just to make a town look...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and they can do what, sell them or whatever, they need to do.
And they get it, one of them have white monies.
Yeah.
So, we need, uh, to adopt the resolution, allowing us to do that, correct?
And then assign, to assign the certificate.
And to assign the tax certificates to the city of Austin.
And if I got this right, if I understood you right, these people that owe this money still have an opportunity to do, get them back, but they'll still come and discuss them with the Austin.
That's correct, and that, well, um, kind of yes and no. They will come to the auditor's office to redeem it, and then I'll have to tell Austin that they were unsuccessful in keeping their lien. But if it shortens the redemption timeframe, Austin will get these with, so to speak, a hundred and twenty days versus three hundred and sixty-five days.
Yeah.
I need a motion to, uh, approve the resolution, uh, to assign the twenty-nineteen tax sale certificates to the city of Austin.
But you just said, I made a motion.
I'll second it, I'll, I...
Taking too long, yeah.
Mr. Vice, may I get your signature right here, where that X is at? On the back of these certificates?
That was my signature.
But then other X. And then I'll get someone that, you know, where I said that, I have your signature.
Both of them?
Yes, I don't know why they changed the back, usually the auditor, they passed it all out, but they changed it. It's a legal law. So, that's it. And then do you need to sign the resolution? I don't know if he's got his signature placed, I'm sure he does, on there, yes, he does.
There is?
There is a, a, or, I think you might have a copy. You'll just sign here, John, and there, Bob, on the yay side.
You, you sign?
Yes, make sure you sign one of the daisies.
Alright, now the twenty-twenty contract renewal for, for to the extension. No, it's still jumped, United Healthcare Insurance, still jumped, isn't it? So...
Right, let me show the parents here, I'm sorry. Alright, United Healthcare Insurance, you have a letter that is actually on your letterhead. You have a black and white copy, and I have a colored copy around there somewhere, that I can read your signature. But, um, United Healthcare, if you want to, I guess you want to read the letter, probably allow, uh, what they're requesting, you all are potentially requesting them to do.
The Scott County Board of Commissioners elected to approve the recommendation of the insurance committee and renew the group health down in Bayesian plans with United Healthcare for the plan year beginning January one, twenty-twenty. We have also elected to eliminate our non-embedded HDHP medical plan effective twelve thirty-one nineteen. With the rate relief negotiated by our broker, Freeman, Will, and Meemire, uh, there will be a zero rate increase on any of our plans with United Healthcare. In addition, there will be no increase in the COVID administration, administration rates. Uh, sincerely, our seat vice president and Scott County Board of Commissioner. Again, this is new, zero, uh, increase, and, uh, we've got three different tiers. We're basically getting rid of, getting rid of the lowest tier, and, uh...
And the difference between the second tier and the third tier is that the second tier was an embedded deduct, isn't embedded deductible. The third tier was a high deductible, it was higher than the second tier and not embedded. And we did have families, I have some information with people that are participating on that plan. Actually, most of the employees who are enrolled for insurance are actually on the Plan One, which is the PPO with no HSA. So they're taking the higher end plan with the lower deductible. Um, then the second plan has, um, forty-one people on it, which is what we're keeping. And then the third plan, which we're proposing that we do away with, has forty-four people on it, but twenty-seven, seven of them are single employees, because it was basically fifty cents a month to the employee, so they would just pick it if they had other coverage somewhere else, or if they just needed themselves. But for, we do have families on here, we have employees and children, and we have employees and spouses. And it's very dangerous for them, because they could spend, family of four could spend two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars each person if they had an event, and that would be totally out of pocket, and that would be virtually twelve thousand dollars. It's not embedded. With Plan Two, it's safer, because after you hit deductible on two people, you don't pay anymore. So it, it was very risky to offer that anyway, and the county's signed savings, isn't very much at all. It's about fifty dollars difference a month to have that riskier plan than it is to save the plan two. So we would be really improving what we offer if the third one was gone.
And this is what the insurance committee recommended?
The insurance committee recommended the third plan be gone, and...
You want to make it secure.
Um, Patty, Mike, uh, I'm just kind of an ex, I don't vote, uh, but I'm there for, for the information. Um, Trina, our payroll deputy, um, Mike Jones, and, or Donnie Ritchie, and Rachel Harden.
Is Donnie not on the meeting?
Donnie's on it, yes.
Darlene, who? From the library.
Darlene, yes, and I forgot about Darlene, yes, because they get a, they are a part of our group. Yeah, I forgot, thank you, I was going to say, I said, Donnie. Yeah, so we had a fairly large group, and we've discussed this different times, and, um, you know, and then we're actually having a meeting tomorrow, um, to look at more of the health savings account portion, and, and some of the cost breakdown, but...
I'll make a motion for the last one.
Uh, second, I'm signing. Yeah, that's the one you wanted, right?
Yes, sir, thank you, that's the one I was looking for and you had it.
And I had?
Yes, you did.
Funny how that works, huh? Alright, we got consideration claims up here, uh, for the month, uh, October claims, monthly claims.
And you did skip your 2020 Purdue contract.
I did that?
Yes.
Little thing like that.
Did you really say that out loud? Twenty twenty contract for Purdue. Yeah, I'm having, oh, yeah. Alright, uh, again, uh, this is something that we're required to do and, uh, the amount of seventy-seven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, uh.
And the reason why that jumped, you probably are thinking, why isn't it in the forty-something thousand dollar range? It's because of the personnel realignment that they did prior to last year. This is about a, what, a two thousand dollar uptick from the seventy-five that was approved for nineteen?
Yeah.
Because they, um, put more obligation on a Purdue, they, they shifted monies to the Purdue contract versus us hiring people downstairs and we only support that office technically through one full-time office person. So the other monies were budgeted towards the contract or personnel. That's why it shipped through like that. But this is up just a little bit from last year, it was seventy-five, five thirty-five last year.
Not eight hundred dollars, right? Yeah.
I don't have the original, I don't have the last.
And that's statute.
We statutorily have to contract with Purdue.
Okay. So, motion, allow me to sign. Second.
And he needs to sign right there, John.
Right, it's not two or both?
Just both.
Okay. Kind of disappointed, I'm gonna sign.
We'll get you something around.
I'm gonna read this real carefully here, but I think that we may be on the consideration of the October twenty nineteen monthly claims, I think. I don't know for sure.
You're right.
Yeah. Motion made to approve the claim by second. We'll sign that. Consideration of amendments for September eighteenth meeting, have you had a chance to see that?
Have a look.
I'll second. Uh, payroll docket ratification for October eleventh and the twenty-fifth, I have a motion.
Passed.
For both, I'll second, we'll sign that.
That's the holiday schedule?
The holiday schedule, let me see this right here. Are we still giving December the twenty-fifth off?
No, I know, first we are, we are.
Yeah, what is it now?
We are in election year next year, again, it's countywide, and so it's exact same schedules we had this year. Same amount of dates, we just shifted the days and the dates accordingly.
I'm gonna have to re-sign the thing.
Yeah, you have to sign it.
You've, you've done it, make a motion before. Motion made, and I'll second, and, uh, guess what, you can sign this too.
Oh, good.
Is this the one you wanted, right here?
That's the one.
I was actually gonna hold out, I was gonna try to give him some more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna give him some extra.
I remember for you.
Yeah, you've got, you heard me alone.
Thank you very much.
How about this G I S data exchange request, that's, uh.
This is for, uh, utility, Clark County R N C, is it no charge to them? There's a very tiny little short schedule that you'll see on the very back of what you've got, that's asking for the certain parcel layers, they just want parcel, service area boundaries and utility easements from our G I S. And this is very customary what we do, we share this data with utilities for free.
And my money, and they called here, since, uh, agreement to work together, basically.
To work together with W T H.
And, you know, this has been kind of a I think the sore spot for time to here on, on some different things, because with the time that I'm going back, uh, allowed them, but once we allow, uh, somebody like a, uh, a utility, then they cannot pass that on to somebody that would come to them, correct? I mean, that is still, they would, if somebody else would want that information, they wouldn't, I would think they would not be allowed to pass that on without that saying people coming to us, correct?
Number four on that document, I, I don't know, but I, I probably didn't do the whole contract. It says ownership and rights and it doesn't, by them getting this does not alter the rights of the ownership at all. So they do not own it, they're just allowed to access.
Access.
Yes, and then from year to year, things change, so their data gets outdated really fairly quickly. So then they'll need to get an update and they'll have to go through this process again.
Right there, can you be sure?
Okay.
Alright, and here's what you need to sign if you want to agree.
And like I said, we do this with, with several utilities, I don't have problems with that, so.
Motion. Motion made, uh.
John, you get a sign.
Oh.
You, you can if you want to, that's between you and Bob.
I don't know if we had here.
I've been trying to get you to.
Alright, Susan. Alright, uh, let's see. We have anything on there? Horizon ground lease update?
Not in your packet, all I know are their, their emails floating around between Bobby Sten and Verizon to try to get everything worked out. And since he's not here, he can't tell me the latest and greatest on it, but I have some copies of some exchanges. But I believe they have been hashing out some of the terms and some of the things. And I know the last meeting, you talked to Preston Patton, that, you know, we talked about moving it to the corner and you had to go to, they're playing commission and talk about the height of the power, monopole, that kind of thing, so.
And one thing, one thing that we did, I think I asked you, was for having escalation clause in there for each year.
Yes.
That it would go up a little bit at least to offset that, so.
And I think we always got that worked out.
Okay, so we'll, that'll be hopefully done by the next meeting.
Yeah, but, yeah, we'll hopefully have something next meeting.
Uh, F L I M A, F, what, F M L A? Uh, motion to allow.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, that one. I'll make a motion, that. And we're only talking from there, there, there.
That's not correct.
That's not correct?
No. And why are we signing them?
That's the first part of it.
Okay. So.
So we'll.
So he will bring something back if he don't know if longer than that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I need.
I'll make a motion, pass.
I'll second, I think we gotta sign that there. I think it's just one.
Just be due.
I think it is, it's just fair. Alright, job description updates for second deputy assessor. And, uh, second deputy.
That's not a new position, all they, um, did was have someone, actually, I shouldn't say all they did, but we have a second deputy assessor that is retiring, um, beginning next month, Ms. O'Chatt is going to retire. And so usually whenever someone leaves, that's the time to kind of look at the job description, update it. There has been no status changes, no anything other than a few duties updated to fit more of what we're doing now. As you can see, the last provision it had was February of two thousand and three until it stayed in November twenty nineteen. So we weren't in need of looking at the duties very closely. So there's no pay change, this is just you approving something that we're changing as far as, um, updating the job description. And, you know, that's kind of a long, long thing with Irwin's office, we've kind of got a bigger project to update everybody, but this gets another one out of the way, so we don't have to do it later.
One at a time.
Just one at a time, if you don't mind, because they're.
Okay, for the, uh, motion to approve, uh, for the second deputy of, uh, Scott County Assessor.
Yeah, I'll make one, I like to add and all, it's just basically keeping what we got for places.
They changed the duties, um, you know, they basically said inner sales disclosure data, just some of the odds and events.
Do you need anything other than this data, you only need to say.
Just acknowledge what they changed at the meeting.
The soil water district coordinator here, uh.
That's different.
It is different.
Very different, um, you can see the highlights and the strikes.
So they was, they had exempt status and now they're non-exempt?
Correct, it did not make the exempt status. Um, it was updated in February of two thousand and twelve. It was changed at that time in twelve to reflect that the person for this position had to have a bachelor's degree to be the coordinator there. Um, Ryan Irwin Shealy researched this position and most positions like this do not require a bachelor's degree. This was not a professional position like an I T person or a nurse, so it didn't qualify. Um, they're, it, they didn't supervise anybody, they didn't make policy hire, fire. They didn't even make the salary threshold for the federal labor for exempt positions. So we had to take it back to a non-exempt, um, and change, some language didn't match. The district coordinator was in the position, but it said director down in the body. There were a few things that needed to be updated and you can see, um, the things that were there. The biggest changes were it went from exempt back to non-exempt. And then also it changed the minimum education requirement to high school or G E D. Those are the biggies. And Linda, um, the exiting retiring person from this position and John Harden have all reviewed this and they approved this description that you've got here. And I have one that's cleaned up, this is just so you can see the changes.
Does that affect money or anything?
The money's the same, everything's the same.
Changes for.
And stats, yeah. It's still full-time, there's nothing.
How many years she worked her?
She's probably been there, what, four maybe, three, four years maybe?
Yeah.
You think about three, I mean, like three.
Yeah, about three years, yeah. And, uh, so, I think I think it's right. Yeah, I'm good with this, I mean, I don't have time to discuss here, uh, again, uh, you can allow the, or accept the, uh, job description has been changed.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, again, if you don't need anything on that, I think, uh.
And the hiring process is already done?
It's in the works, we've advertised, um, he wanted to go, because she, she left at the end of October. So he's there, we need to find him somebody.
Veteran service officer position, we've got, you've got a copy of it, I've got a copy, Michael have a copy, so we will.
I'm gonna curious, what are, yeah, what's your next step with this?
We will, probably just need to look over these and, uh, and, uh, have an executive session and decide, uh, to enter, set up interviews for, how many we want to interview, if someone wanted to do that, and move forward on that. Dylan Inspector Position.
Um, you have a resignation letter in your packet. A couple little initial changes there, is whenever we figured out his pay time off, it ended up pushing him one more day out, because the twenty-second was a Friday, that twenty-fifth is a Monday. So he initialed the changes in his original letter.
Okay.
Um, so, that being said, we have discussed, Marty and I, you wanna, you wanna come on?
Yes, I do.
Because I asked her to summarize the inspection statuses that we have for each committee.
Alright.
You ready?
Yeah.
That way, huh?
That is a list of what I was able to cobble together. Now, some of those have some age on them, some of them are from twenty eighteen. But, you know, either the person has had problems or there's been a problem on the site, so that hasn't been closed down. There are others that are so new that no inspections have been made yet. Um, but then there are others that, you know, I, I don't know whether he's talked with them and hasn't made notes, I, I just don't know. And, um, so I made up the list of, of what was on his desk and what was in a standing file that I have by my desk. Here's what it is.
We did change this to full-time status, didn't we?
It has, it's been for time for, for several.
Well, there's some discussion somewhere along the line whether it should be or not, I, my discussion.
It's, it's been full-time.
Well, yeah, somewhere along the line, yeah, go ahead, yeah, I'm all for that.
It, that's your all's choice whether you want it to be a full-time position or not. And it's, from my perspective, when do you want me to advertise and, and our job description really needs an update too because it was, it hasn't been updated for a while.
The sooner the better, isn't it?
I think, uh, I, yeah, I would say, if our job description you feel like it's good?
It's really not, I don't think for what we need now, because when we have, we have to have a floodplain administrator named at the county. And that position is the best fit for a floodplain administrator position. Because the D N R requires us to have that or we can't do certain things.
Well, so then, then can we, how quick can we get a job description revised to put, uh, out?
Fairly quickly, because I've already got
Okay.
mine started of revisions, I can get your next meeting, I can get, but I can advertise in the meantime, because I don't think the pay's gonna change, I don't think the hours are gonna change.
Okay.
I can get an updating job description, so whenever someone does get hired, they know what their expectations are. That I can work on between now and the next meeting.
You know, and, and his, and, and of course Lee's last day, we've got that here too.
Right.
Uh, if we could do that, uh, again, uh, you know, I would be told to, yeah, have him leave and say, you know, there you go. You know, if he, if he wouldn't care to do that, because I think, you know.
You know, and he, I, I talked to him briefly and I asked him if he has any kind of recommendations or anything, and he was like, that's right, do you guys? So I don't know if he will or not.
Okay.
And the note.
That's fine, that's fine.
The note I received from him that was on my desk this morning indicating that he's done.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So in the interim.
What are we gonna do?
Do we need to send?
Marty?
No, I can help them with color coordination, where to put a window, but as far as looking at footer, oh, oh, that's lovely. You just, all right, I don't know anything about that.
And they're gonna be all flooded.
Right, because you're never too old to learn.
And longer the way.
Really?
We're actually holding up contractors every time, but longer the way.
Look, you know, we.
I have, I've already had calls, when I, uh, I, I did like seven or eight permits last week and I, and I stapled his card, because at that time I didn't know what was going on. I stapled his card to the inspection sheet and then I stapled my card. I said, you go ahead and call him, if he doesn't answer, then call my number and we'll either tell you to take photos or get someone else.
Can we not use, uh, there was Mike?
Mike Dickerson?
Mike Dickerson at one time.
In the interim?
In a interim there, is that something, has anybody touched base with him to see if he would be?
No.
Interes- that would probably be the first thing.
I don't pay a salary, so I'm not gonna contact.
I think, I think that would be, can we touch base with him? I think, I think that would be, can we touch base with him?
Do you want me to call Ms. Dickerson and see if she would be available?
If he would be, if he would not.
To work with Marty?
Yes, for sure.
Help us through this one.
Yeah, through this, because if he, again, we don't wanna hold people up. And at that point, if not, we certainly need to think about somebody that may be retired, that's been in the building trades, that might want something to do for...
I said retired.
I did. Yes, I did. Yes, I'll let you out. You're not retired yet. So, if we can, if we can get that, get somebody like that, let's try and find somebody in a interim position until we can get this filled.
And I'm probably gonna
Or a part-time position.
Work in reverse on this, but it's, you can't go ahead and start the process or the hard process until we get the job description sorted out. Could we go ahead and start the hard process?
I can...
I like it as movement.
I think so too.
By the time you have someone in place, you need a good job description. You could go ahead, I can, I'm looking to you guys to tell me, do I advertise starting Monday? Just open it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too, yeah.
Up to two weeks, put it in the paper, put it on the web, whatever, and advertise it for two weeks starting Monday.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because you guys, by the time you figure this all out and hire somebody, he's being paid through the twenty-fifth of November. So, we can't hire somebody until the twenty-sixth, because we don't have the money there.
We can have it ready with them.
I'm assuming, no, again, we don't, I'm assuming this to you, but I'm assuming this, is if you, I guess he he has a list of things that he would, that he does on the inspections.
Exactly.
That we can have somebody say, here's what you need to be...
Right. And I was looking at sheets, those sheets, and that's how I was estimating. But there again, you know, it could be that he's already talked to the person.
And are they, and are they, I guess, the the regulations, the standards, are they on there that they would have to meet? I mean, is that something, is on the sheets?
No.
Okay, okay. So, the building codes?
Yeah.
You do have them though, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, we would be, because I'm thinking that John may have time to go out and do a few of these if it comes down to that. I'm just saying it, I'm just saying. So, anyway, yeah, we will make this work. I don't wanna hold anybody up. It's in the building trade business. And we'll certainly advertise starting Monday, get that out, go out Monday in a paper or whatever, or on the board. And then put it in next Wednesday's paper. If you get it, it'll come out next Wednesday if you get it in there by Friday.
Friday, I can get it in there by Wednesday.
Okay. All right, check one out.
And the other report I handed you was just our end of the month.
Oh, yeah.
And the second page of it is twenty eighteen, so you have a little bit of comparison here. We have been busy.
So, it's up?
Oh, it's up.
Thank you.
And Q ten.
Okay. All right, anything else, a little thing? Karen, you got anything?
No, actually, I don't.
Okay. Go ahead.
Would you mind calling me tomorrow and, uh, John Dickson, I just missed him. I expect he knows it. Just wanted to see where we're at.
The D Drake appraisal.
Well, I talked to John about it, and we're not, and we could either lose this if we're not careful. And maybe we want to lose it, but I mean, it's, we gotta check it. And it's been like two or three weeks since we discussed it, so. But I did talk to John about it. He knows we got that part. And the second thing I was gonna say is I did go out and look at the old health department. I took somebody with me that knew the construction business, and I asked him what would it take to get up and move into this thing. And he said, well, it's just like moving into a rented house or used house. I mean, you can move somebody in right now if you want to, and we can clean it up and use it. But if you wanna fix it up the way it's supposed to be, he said, you can figure on fifty, a hundred thousand dollars. That's from a contractor. And I'm talking everything from all-new windows, carpet painting, uh, front porch area need work, a lot of outside work done. And the last meeting we had here, we talked at, I think, Mr. John mentioned it. Tammy wanted space for like twenty people or something, and we probably had to have knocked a wall out down there. And so, I mean, I still want to get something moving downstairs as quick as we can. And so, I, I mean, that's still our fastest option, even though it may not be our permanent option. If we could clean that up, get them out there, and then see what we're gonna do with his place over here, where we're gonna go. It's, every time we meet, it's two more weeks before we get anything done. And I know Tammy is leaving us, so we'll be hard somebody there too, I suppose, for too long. So, her, what she wanted may not be what the next person wants, but the space is out there. But I mean, if we do nothing but use it temporary, and knowing that we may have put money in to keep it up, it may be something we may wanna look at as opposing it.
You know, I don't...
We're putting money out every month in utilities.
But we'd have to really research this too. I don't know that, I, can we do, can we put the extension in the office up there, Purdue extension?
I think...
Because see, they was, I was thinking...
I'm not for sure if there's a stipulation.
See, that's what I was wondering, because they used to be in the federal building, you say, and we paid, we paid them out. And then it was for whatever reason, it wound up here when and I, because we talked about that before on a different, different place. And I thought we ran into, we need to, we need to find out through them, through Purdue, if that is possible.
If that's an acceptable location.
Yeah, if it's acceptable, because we are required by statute to
Provide them an office.
Provide them an office, but I, you know, I don't think you can, I think they've got some kind of stipulations where they can be at too. So, I'm...
And Tammy may not have been thinking on that level, but I went out and saw her, and she was like, oh, yeah, that's great, this move.
Okay.
But I don't see anything on a legal level or not.
That's, that's what I'm looking at, is the legal aspects of it, make sure...
And she even mentioned all-new insulation, and I mean, there's even a lot to make, we got to do what, it was probably what, sixty years ago? Who was there?
Oh, no, no, that building out there, no, that's a but that was, I'm gonna say.
I thought they were more alive still.
No.
No?
No, they come in afterward. A building, a building six five, thirty years old, you, wouldn't you think, Steve?
No.
I don't think very often.
I think it would be. Where the, where the health park was out there.
Yeah.
A million, I looked, I looked at probably at least thirty years, wouldn't you? I can't remember.
Twenty-something, I bet.
I have no idea. I think so, I think it might be, but I'm...
It's gonna get, it's forty, like the fifty. They paint, they don't think anything about, they just not, too often, I think it was, they're for the whole apartment ended up that they, they kind of did a few little things and fixed it up, maybe painted it, and maybe things, carpets, and that, they did a few things out there.
My question, you could make your act of responsibility now. You'd love to get things moved out there.
Oh, cat, what's that?
I want sixty-nine. Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm saying that, no.
Oh, I'm...
I mean, there's just so much you can do. It depends on how much you wanna put into it, and you have to figure what's worth it or not.
Somewhere around that time.
So, and...
Because that's what I think. I don't think they were the type of traffic that that would run in.
Fourteen bay in their park.
And, you know, we don't own the park, we do exist. And as long as hospital would have an injection weekly.
It's a legal thing.
Service office, if that was a clinic, even, then they would have had a key or thirty, that would be very helpful, I think, as far as a market to...
I like to do that over here. And I know, as you talk about building insights, the new health department, but I got a feeling that's gonna cost a ton of money if we start putting out there what I think we gotta do. I mean, if we spend seventy-five thousand out here, I can only imagine what it would cost if we started all new up there, so. And that's why I think this might be a better future. I don't know if we're good or not, so.
I don't know if it's legal or not. Fairgrounds would be a logical place for a raise, I would think.
Yeah.
Well, and that's because it's yeah, because it's not, it's not owned by the county. It would be hard.
It'd be legal.
That was one of the places.
But there is the buildings, having to turn in there on the backside on the city limits. That's the rental building, I think, for a fair, you know what I'm talking about?
The old O M P.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's been purchased. That's, that's open again, because we actually looked at purchasing that, you know, we did.
Well, I mean, rent from them.
Yeah, well, and it may be rent, I don't know, it may be rent, but as far as, we looked at that.
I just, I just wanna get something going.
Understood.
Yeah.
It's hard, and it's one of those deals, it's hard, it's hard to get there, but, okay, let's, you'll check on the legalities of that?
I will call Purdue.
Okay. Actually, it'll be something to look at.
Team A already.
All right. Anything else, John?
No, sir.
All right. I don't have anything more. Anything from the crowd, anybody else? Anything for... Marty?
Well, I was gonna talk about Christmas candles, but I'm just not prepared.
Next.
I'm very sorry.
Understood.
Thanks.
I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn. Are you sure?
Yeah.